Okay, we're gonna get started here. Welcome everybody to the September 8th, 2025. City Council meeting. I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Tim McLaughlin is absent. Rod Runyon? Scott Randall?
Counsel Runyon is on Zoom.
Counsel Richardson is absent. Counsel Ring?
Here.
Mayor Mace?
I'm present. Item three is Pledge of Allegiance. Will everybody please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as far as item four goes, we do have some changes. Item nine I, which is the authorization to purchase a skid steer, will be deleted from the agenda and items ten B, C, and D, because of issues I'll be getting to later, ten B, C, and D, I would propose that those also be deleted from the agenda. And I would entertain a motion to entertain the agenda as amended. There was one other change, which is more minor, but item eleven F, was that ten F? Ten F will be in a discussion item and not the passage of an ordinance. And we're also moving that to item eleven A, because it will be a discussion item. But we will still have all comments and city council deliberation. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
To move by Counsel Runyon and seconded by Counselor Ring to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five A is a presentation by the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council presentation.
Yeah, well.
Hello again. Could you guys please introduce yourselves?
Leslie Narimore, and I am the Executive Director of Mid-Columbia Community Action Council.
Sarah Kellums, Development and Partnership Director at Mid-Columbia Community Action Council.
You just talk directly into the microphone and should be okay.
Okay, can you hear us now? All right, well, thank you for having us. I just wanted to mention right off the bat, because we are also here with another item that is being discussed that is of hot interest, that we're actually here to talk about Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. And we obviously support our community partners, Bread and Blessings, and we want to be supportive of them, but just wanted to make sure that people are aware we're actually here to talk about MCAC services. And I also wanted to say that I'm really happy to see that you have a proclamation for Hunger Action Month, and I hope that you will remember that commitment that you are making tonight when you move through that discussion. Can we move to the next slide, please?
Mid-Columbia Community Action Council is the community action agency that serves Hood River, Wasco, and Sherman Counties. And we provide an array of programs and services for low-income community members across the region. We have been serving the community since 1965, and our programming has changed a little bit over that timeframe.
So we are a community action agency, and community action agencies were created by the 1964 Economic Opportunity Act. And every county throughout our country is covered by a community action agency. Each agency is a little bit different, but they all have one thing in common, and that is that we are helping people who are low income and moving them to a place where they are thriving. And here in Oregon, we're one of eighteen community action agencies. And one of, I think, the most important things about community action is the way that we are governed. And we're governed by a tripartite board, which means that it's one-third elected officials, one-third democratically selected low-income representatives, and one-third community members. And here in Wasco County, you're represented by Commissioner Phil Brady and Lena Lindhorst, who is with the next door. And then we currently have a seat open for our Wasco County. We're working on filling that right now. So this is the promise of community action, and I just wanted to highlight this because this is the umbrella that we all work under. And that is that community action changes people's lives, embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities, and makes America a better place to live. We have been doing that here locally since 1965, and we are going to continue to do that. Next slide.
Our mission right now as an organization is up on the screen, and I'll let you read that. What I would really like to highlight is our team of staff who is engaged in this work. And one of the reasons that our staff is so dedicated to our mission and our work is that they represent the people that we serve. The majority of our staff has lived experience of poverty and/or houselessness, so they are coming from that experience. And that sets up a unique ability to connect and build trust with people who are struggling and work toward the goals of our programs. Next slide, please.
So this is a graphic that we've created that kind of illustrates what we do at MCAC. A lot of our clients come to us through our emergency shelters, not all of our clients, but a majority of them. So they enter this, we call it a continuum of care, through either our seasonal shelter in Hood River or at the Gloria Center when we operationalize in times of emergency. From there, they can move into transitional housing, which we have the annex here in the Dells, the former Oregon Motor Motel. And then from there, the goal is to move them into a permanent housing placement. So we work with a lot of landlords, we provide supports while people are in our programs. And then at the end of that program period, we step back from providing that assistance, and then they hold the lease with the landlord and they get to stay in that home. Our end goal, whenever anyone comes in for our services, particularly around shelter, is that they're going to then find themselves in a permanent home. We never want to see someone return to homelessness. And off on the, I guess that's left there, that maintaining current housing, we do a lot of work around eviction prevention because we understand that it is a lot more expensive to get someone rehoused than it is to keep them in the housing that they already have. So we can provide eviction prevention assistance, and then also that utility assistance helps keep people housed as well. Oftentimes, if people have received a shut-off notice, the next thing that follows is that they will lose their housing. So we provide utility assistance to help them not only stay warm, but also potentially prevent eviction.
This next slide highlights some of our impact numbers from 2024. So in the year of 2024, we supported 769 community members through our utility assistance programs. And then the core of those is LIHEEP, which is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. And that helps particularly seniors on a fixed income. We always have more need for utilities assistance than we have funding available for. So we prioritize seniors and disabled households for that, for our utilities program. With the housing program, I'd like to highlight that 280 number that you see up there. If you're thinking back to the previous slide and the graphic of the green oval that is the people that we supported to stay in their housing and prevent eviction. So in 2024, that was 280 people that we worked with who did not lose their housing. And then we also worked with 33 veteran households. We'll talk a little bit later about our Supportive Services for Veteran Families Program, or SSVF. And then, so this is one of a series of presentations that Leslie and I are doing across the three-county region. And in each of those, we are highlighting our landlord partnerships. So both to you as city council and then to all of you as community. The landlord partnerships are something that is really critical to our work, that we need to continue to expand. I think all of us who live in this area know how hard it is, regardless of your income level, to find affordable, available housing. So we actively partner with landlords, and in particular, we have a renter education program that is called RentWell. And through that program, we can provide additional landlord guarantees and incentives. So if you are a landlord or you know someone who is a landlord, we would love to meet with you, and our housing staff can share more information and answer your questions about what it looks like to partner with us.
So this is a picture of our staff at the Gloria Center. And we've been in the Gloria Center for just a little over a year now. And the Gloria Center is what's known as a navigation center, which means it functions as a one-stop shop. So when someone comes in, we have a variety of community partners on site. We actually have six community partners with us. So when someone comes in, they are able to have all of their needs met in one spot. So they don't have to come see us, and then we tell them to go somewhere else. All of those partners are right there. And we also operate, as we mentioned earlier, emergency shelter out of there. And then all of our services are available for all counties out of the Gloria Center, even though it is located in the Dells. And prior to the Gloria Center, we were located right over here on Fourth Street. We worked out of an old house. And that was not a very dignified location for either our clients or our staff. And we're really happy that we now have this beautiful office, that our staff like to come to work, our clients like to be in it as well. And we're just really thankful to the community that helped make that happen. And so from this slide, we're gonna now move into talking about our programs.
And if any of you haven't yet visited us at the Gloria Center, that facility is really open to the public. And if you'd ever like a tour or to just come and see what the building is like, Miriam or myself would be happy to meet with you and show you around the Gloria Center. So looking at our services in Hood River, we have two locations in Hood River. The first is our office. It is located in downtown, across from the county administration building. And it is a small office that provides our utilities and housing case management. We also distribute basic needs supply bundles, including for warming and cooling support from our Hood River office. And then the Hood River Shelter is operated on Oak Street on the way out to Safeway. And it's based out of the Pallet Shelter, similar to what you're familiar with here in the Dells. The Hood River Shelter has been open for 14 years and became a program of MCAC two years ago, and provides winter warming shelter services, November through March or April of each year. And we are excited about the integration of the Hood River Shelter program and the ability to provide more wraparound housing case management and referrals to our other programs.
So this is the Annex, and I have a feeling that most of you are probably familiar. We just celebrated two years of the Annex being open. And in the first year of operations, we served 163 people, including 40 children. And if you haven't been by the Annex lately, it really is beautiful. It is a really nice little corner of town. All of the flowers that you see there are all planted by residents, and we found that our residents really take pride in that space. And the Annex is transitional, so people don't live there permanently right now. They come there, they catch their breath, they figure out what's next, and then they move into permanent housing from there. And we have a lot of key partners at the Annex. I think the one that I would like to highlight today is the Columbia Gorge Food Bank. They provide a lot of food that we can keep on site for residents. Because it is a former hotel, the rooms do not have kitchens, and so we have to provide all of the food. And so the Columbia Gorge Food Bank has been a really good partner for that. And then I also want to highlight that Center for Living is another really big partner for us. They are onsite providing case management, and we are really thankful for everything that they do. I also wanted to highlight, at the end, the west end of the building, we have a new mural down there. And we're really, really proud of that mural. It's really beautiful. And I think, again, it just speaks to all of the partnerships and the people who live at the Annex. We had some of the people who live there participate in painting the mural. And so the pieces that look like chalk that are scattered throughout the mural, those were all painted by people who live onsite.
And we appreciate the city's support around the mural from kind of the initial period when we were exploring that idea and the concept and the guidance that you gave us and how to make that process successful. Thank you. This year, under Leslie's leadership, I'm really excited to share that we've started outreach visits to Sherman County. We have a team of staff going in person twice each month to the senior center in Morro to meet with residents there. Although the Gloria Center does provide services for all of our region, we recognize that for folks who live in the really rural areas of Sherman County, that that is a barrier to come into the Dells for services. And so we're excited that we are now building an in-person presence regularly in Sherman County.
And this is Jessica. Jessica works in our SSVF program. SSVF stands for Supportive Services for Veteran Families. So we provide rental assistance, basic needs, wraparound case management for veterans. And then we also own the Hamilton, which is a nine-unit apartment that is specifically for veterans and their families. And a lot of our staff are certified as community health workers. And community health workers go through specific training so that they can help other people learn how to navigate services. If you've ever had to seek social services before, it can be really challenging and it can be really difficult. And so our community health workers walk that path with our clients to help them get the help that they need. And another, I think, really important piece of being a community health worker is that they all go- worker is that they all go through training to understand self-care. And so they have a much better ability to take care of themselves while they're taking care of their clients. They're able to fill their own cup before they go back out in community and do that work with our clients. This has also allowed us to really deepen our collaboration with our community partners. We have a lot of community partners. Bridges to Health is one example. They also have community health workers. And so we're able to have a much better relationship and work a lot better alongside them.
We also wanted to share some updates around the Mid-Columbia Houseless Collaborative and the upcoming Housing Stabilization Summit. We've been working for the past three years with over 40 partner organizations, including our local governments, social service, and healthcare providers around preventing and eliminating homelessness in the gorge. And the Houseless Collaborative is focused on four key goal areas of shelter, services, housing, and advocacy. Within our services and advocacy focus areas, we have a lot of priority actions that align with the Housing Stabilization Summit. So this is a day for primarily for staff who work in these fields to receive trainings, to come together and network, share resources, and be inspired and learn to deepen their career and their impact. This year, we are adding a community-wide event, which I've left flyers with Amy. It is a community screening at the Granada on the evening of Thursday, November 6th of the film No Place to Grow Old. This is about the really difficult reality of elders who are aging into homelessness. And we will have a conversation and share a meal. The Granada is providing chili. This is a free event. There will be donations accepted, but we'd love to encourage our community to attend and to learn more and to connect with each other. So that's coming up on Thursday, November 6th. And then next slide. Thank you. Another project of the Houseless Collaborative that I'd like to highlight is the Lived Experience Work Group. This is a group made up of people who have experienced homelessness, who come together to advise on key projects of the collaborative and participate in advocacy. So one of the advocacy projects, Miriam Sterrett, who's here tonight, is our community engagement coordinator. And Miriam and I are the staff conviators of this work group. And we went to Salem this spring to build comfort in the public space and prepare to advocate with our legislature. So we're planning to go back to Salem next spring. The Lived Experience Work Group has also been carrying out a video stories project. And I brought flyers for this as well. There's some, they're just three to four minute videos. I really wanted to highlight the top video that includes Josh from the Housing Authority, Joe Stewart, who is a local landlord, and then an individual that they worked with who first was living at the Pallet Shelter here in the Dells, and then at the Annex, and then through that partnership, he is now in stable housing. And it kind of explains how the Housing Authority and our staff at MCAC and Joe work together to support this community member.
So this is our last slide. And this kind of brings it full circle. So we started out talking about community action, and I wanted to end on community action as well. And to me, the most important word in that is action. And that means that we maintain the ability to be flexible and to pivot to meet our community needs. So a recent example of that is our response to the Rowena Fire. When the fire happened and the Red Cross opened a shelter, when they had to close their shelter, we opened our shelter at the emergence or at the Gloria Center to give people shelter throughout the weekend. And then we're still working with a lot of families who were affected by that fire. We currently are working with 26 different households, and we've been able to rehouse 19 of those households. And that is a really big number for us in such a short amount of time. We usually cannot get people through the system that fast. And I think that's really a testament to everyone in this community. We had landlords reach out and we were really appreciative and thankful of that. And we're still looking for a few more units for those last few families. And then I also wanted to note that we follow our community's lead. So as a community action agency, we are mandated to do a community needs assessment every three years. This coming spring, we're about to start that. And then every five years, we have to do a strategic plan. So we're about to release our strategic plan. And our strategic plan is based on our community needs assessment. So when we are out there gathering that information, we take that feedback and incorporate that at every level of our agency. And I think that that is something that really makes community action unique. I wanted to say thank you for having us. We, Sarah and I have been going around, we're going to every county in our service area and every city in our service area. And we're just really thankful for everyone being willing to listen and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by the city council for Leslie or Sarah? I have a couple. I didn't hear you mention in regards to the Annex, how many former residents have you been able to place into permanent housing? I didn't hear you mention the number.
We actually don't have that number in our presentation and I'd be happy to speak with our data team and then get back to you. Could I follow up with you on that?
Oh, sure. It used to be, it was well into several dozen, if I remember.
Yes. And I am just, I'm not sure what our updated number is. So I would be happy to follow up with you on that.
Also, I wanted to mention, for those that don't know, the City of the Dells contributed $500,000 toward the construction of the Gloria Center. So I want to make everyone aware of that. So, okay, any last minute questions?
I have a question.
Oh, let's go with Council Ring first and then Council Runyon.
I'm curious to know what, what sorts, what sorts of goals you have. And I know that'll come out in your strategic planning documentation, but I'm also very curious about, like, what are your roadblocks? What are the things that you're worried about? And, and how can the city assist? Or are there other venues that the city may be able to advocate?
Well, I would say our main goal right now is stability. We have gone through a period of tremendous growth. So just a couple of years ago, there were only nine employees and we were in an old house. And now we have 31 employees and we're in a beautiful new facility. We operate the Annex. So my main goal right now is focusing on stability and making sure that we can maintain the level of service that we have put ourselves at, right? I would say as far as how the city can be of assistance, I think you said the key word, and that is to advocate. Right now, there is a lot of uncertainty around federal funds. And we haven't seen like huge sweeping changes yet, but we know that they're coming. And so I would say for you all to just be aware of what those changes mean in real time for your community. And if you have the chance to advocate with people who can make a difference.
Thank you. Council Runyon.
Okay. Excuse me if my voice is not good and I'm strapped to a chair. I have vertigo. That's why I'm not there tonight. The, I was actually the Chair of Mid-Columbia Community Action for most of my eight years as a county commissioner. So I know somewhat the goals and whatnot. One of those was the pallet shelters that were put in on city property a number of years ago. And when that ended, that the Gloria Center was created, to my knowledge, the shelters, including the many of them the city paid for, were moved out to the Gloria Center. Are they still there? Are they being used?
Yes, the pallet shelters are located at the Gloria Center. And when we were first envisioning the Gloria Center project, we were operating the pallet shelters on Barge Way. And our original plan was to bring the pallet shelters to the Gloria Center and continue operating them year round there. While we were still raising funds for the Gloria Center capital project, that's when the opportunity to participate in Project Turnkey and open the Annex was presented to us. So we chose to accept that opportunity and purchase and renovate the Annex. And with that, we've increased the number of shelter beds that we're providing by 259%. And we've added family units to that on the west end of the Annex. So at this time, we don't have the resources, either the staffing or financial, to operate both the Annex and the Gloria Center shelters year round, which is why we're operating the pallet shelters at the Gloria Center as emergency shelter. So in the past two years, we've opened those for cooling shelter twice in the summer. We opened last winter once for a week for warming shelter. And then, as Leslie mentioned, we opened for a short duration after the Red Cross Shelter closed for Rowena Fire. So without the resources to operate both programs, we are focusing on the Annex and that really huge increase that we have in shelter beds that it represents.
Thank you.
May I just add one thing to that? I would say that we're not opposed to operating the Gloria Center shelters year round. It's just a funding issue. So if the funding ever became available, we would be happy to operate those year round. But right now, we don't have the funding or the staff capacity.
Thank you. Council Ring.
Thanks. A quick follow-up question. I'd love to, I know you probably don't have the figure with you today, but I'd love to, better under, oh, that better? I'd love to better understand what it would take to get the Gloria Center up and running on a regular basis. I think it would be valuable.
Okay, any others? Thank you both very much.
Thank you for having us.
Item 5B. We have a proposed Hunger Action Month proclamation, a presentation by Leah. I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. Alt. Why don't you just give your presentation? I guess I should read it. Yeah, go ahead. Introduce yourself and make sure you talk directly in the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Hall, Community Philanthropy Manager at Columbia Gorge Food Bank. Columbia Gorge Food Bank is a regional food bank serving Sherman, Wasco, and Hood River Counties. As part of the Oregon Food Bank Network, we connect statewide food resources to our local pantries and partners, ensuring that nourishing food reaches our community here in the gorge. Our mission is to eliminate hunger and its root causes because no one should be hungry. Every September, we join food banks across the country in recognizing Hunger Action Month, a time to raise awareness and spark action around food insecurity. Here in the gorge, thousands of families, farmworkers, and individuals face tough choices between food, housing, medicine, and other essentials. Columbia Gorge Food Bank works year round to ensure everyone in our region has access to the food they need. And September is a chance to highlight that work. It's also when we host Empty Bowls, our annual fundraiser that brings the community together in support of local hunger relief. Hunger Action Month reminds us that when we act together, we can create lasting change and build a stronger, more food-secure region for everyone. Hunger starts with policy and it can end there, too. Food alone cannot solve hunger. The laws our elected officials make about wages, food assistance, housing, childcare, and healthcare decide who can afford basic needs and who can't. We're grateful to the council this evening for sharing this proclamation. Bringing awareness and education to food insecurity in our region is an important step towards addressing the needs of our community members facing poverty.
Thank you. I'd like to read the proclamation now. I guess I have the authority and the power to go ahead and just proclaim it. We don't need a vote by the city council. Whereas addressing the food insecurity needs of children, youth, adults, seniors, active military members, and veterans is fundamental to the future of the City of the Dells. And whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Wasco County, where 14.9% of Wasco County residents struggle with hunger and do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas the growing need for comprehensive, coordinated emergency food programs places a critical responsibility upon our community. And whereas the Columbia Food Bank, Columbia Gorge Food Bank, is committed to combating hunger in every part of our community and providing the resources for our community members in need. And whereas it is a responsibility of citizens of the Dells to learn about hunger and to take action to reduce it. And whereas the Columbia Gorge Food Bank partners with 35 organizations in Wasco, Sherman, and Hood River Counties, and is a member of the Oregon Food Bank Network of regional food banks, working to educate the public about the importance of hunger relief efforts and the need for more resources and attention to hunger and food insecurity. And whereas there are, on the average, 3,770 individuals serve through 1,530 visits monthly for food assistance in Wasco County by the Columbia Gorge Food Bank and its local partners. And whereas the Columbia Gorge Food Bank, along with its local partner agencies, volunteers, and supporters, is committed to educating citizens about the role of food banks, food pantries, and hunger relief efforts in our community. And whereas the Columbia Gorge Food Bank distributes over 1.4 million pounds of food across the gorge each year and engages the community to help in hunger, one meal at a time through donations, community outreach, and volunteer service. And whereas the month of September is designated Hunger Action Month to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and encourage action to combat it. Now therefore, on this eighth day of September of 2025, I, Richard Mays, Mayor of the City of the Dells, on behalf of the city council, proclaim the month of September 2025 as Hunger Action Month and encourage all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of food insecurity and its impact on our nation, state, county, and community. And with that, does anyone have any questions for Leah? Okay, thank you very much. Item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Interested citizens are required to sign up in advance and be recognized. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member, who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested and that response is not immediately provided, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. Okay. We do have some people signed up. They're all signed up for something that's on the agenda, so they will be speaking later on. We will be asking that you hold your comments at that time to three minutes, just like we would for regular audience participation. So it gives you a little advance notice of our intent to limit remarks on item 11A for three minutes. Item seven is, we don't have anybody else that's signed up, so we'll move on. Item seven is the city manager's report, Mr. Klebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by asking our chief of police to come up and introduce a new staff person.
Good evening, council. I'm Tom Worthy, I'm the chief of police for City of the Dells. And it's my pleasure to introduce you tonight to Arturo Dominguez. Arturo, their new codes enforcement officer, backing up Nikki Lesch, who's our senior codes enforcement officer at the police department. Arturo's been with us for a little bit, about a month now, and he's done a fantastic job. Their caseload is unbelievable. They're doing a fantastic job in cleaning up the city and paying attention to those properties that really need it. So welcome, Arturo. We're super happy to have him at the police department.
Thank you, chief. Welcome, Arturo. We appreciate you being here and welcome you aboard.
Just a few other items, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to let the council know that our safety officer has resigned for another job opportunity, so we'll be working to fill that position. That's a position that the council in years past has expressed an interest in being kept up to date on. In addition, our finance director search continues, but we are making progress in that area and I hope to have a positive report soon. Other items, I attended the National Night Out Event, which was a great community evening event, along with several public works muster meetings with the different divisions that we have and a police ride along. The mayor, Commissioner Hegi, and the public works director, Dale McCabe, and Tyler Mitchell from our water treatment plant, gave a tour of our Crow Creek Dam site to Congressman Bentz in support of legislation he's introduced to help effectuate a land transfer so the city can better manage its watershed. I attended the joint work session, economic opportunities analysis, Q Life, which is the Q Life, which is the fiber partnership we have with Wasco County and Northern Wasco County PUD, submitted an application to the Oregon BEAD program, that's Broadband Equity and Access Deployment Grant Opportunity, which we hope to hear back on later this month. And I'll also be speaking with Tyler Stone from Wasco County and Roger Klein from Northern Wasco County PUD at the Oregon PUD Association later this conference, later this week on our fiber partnership. The Dals Area Chamber of Commerce has a banquet this Thursday at the Readiness Center. The community outreach team, which is comprised this time of representatives from the port, Wasco County, and myself, will be attending or headed to Washington DC to advocate for legislative priorities and projects of our local community. So that will be an exciting trip. And I also wanted to give a special thanks to Abby, who is a staffer in my office, for her great work on the outreach book that she puts together. It's a little bit like herding cats, but she's done, she's done an excellent job pulling that together for that trip. And then finally, I wanted to give a reminder to the council and to everybody else in the room here that Mid-Columbia Economic Development District, with support from the City of the Dals, continues to offer free transit passes for downtown employees, employers, and residents. This is a relatively new program. It's the second year, I believe, we've offered in partnership with McCad this free transit pass, and just wanted to help spread the word. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay, item eight is city council reports. We'll start with Counselor Runyon.
Good evening. Once again, no committee reports per se, but a couple of community notes I want to make sure I get out there. On Thursday, at 7:00 AM at Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue, it's the 24th memorial of the 9/11 attack in New York City. 7 o'clock is the starting time. The program lasts about 35 minutes. It'll be conducted by the chief of Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue. Then on September 19th, at Kelly Viewpoint, across from Sarosis Park on Scenic Drive, it's an evening of honor POW MIA Day, Prisoner of War slash Missing in Action Day, representing all wars, all conflicts throughout our nation's history. Those that have not returned, 6 o'clock on September 19th, again at Kelly Viewpoint. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go Counselor Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I participated in the Urban Renewal Agency Board, where we elected a new vice chair and to complete out our officer elections as we had a vacancy. And then at that meeting, we also got a first, an update on the First Street project from Director Chandler, and had an adjustment to the public records fee requests as well.
Thank you. Counselor Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 5th, I attended the Local Public Safety Coordinating Committee, where we voted to accept the Community Corrections Biennial Plan. On August 21st, I participated in the joint work session with the planning commission and the city council. August 26th, I attended a municipal fundamentals training session in Boardman, sponsored by the League of Oregon Cities, where we covered topics like public meetings, law, lobbying, and land use. On August 27th, I attended the Historic Landmarks Commission, where we elected new officers and heard a presentation about the First Street Project. And also that day, we had a briefing with yourself, Counselor Runyon, city attorney, and the city manager.
As far as my report goes, on July 29th, I had a meeting with the Boy Scouts of America and local representative Anthony Pereira. During the month of August, I attended two ribbon cuttings for two new murals. One was already mentioned over at the annex, and the second one was just around the corner here on the back of the commercial building, right by the city parking lot, where Danae Mannion supervised a children's mural, which is, which was just painted by many children in the Dals. And it's great. If you haven't seen it, all you got to do is walk across the parking lot, and there it is. The Dals Arts Center also had a lot to do with that. On August 4th, I attended a year out of the month celebration for Lynn and Marlene Law and their beautiful lawn. On August 4th, Chris Zoukin and I, on behalf of the Wild Dogs Committee, met with two representatives from Cottage Grove, Oregon, who have traveled all the way here to look at our new, our murals that were painted three years ago now. And Cottage Grove is going to be having their own Wild Dogs event in August of 2027. On August the 6th, I attended the 15th meeting of the Federal Street Plaza Committee. On August the 7th, I made a presentation to the Community Affairs Committee at the Chamber of Commerce. On August the 13th, I attended the Oregon Mayors Association Conference. On August 19th, I had a radio interview with Mark Bailey on K, excuse me, a live interview with Al Nguyen on KODL Coffee Break. Federal Street Plaza Committee number, meeting number 16, held on August 20th. The joint meeting with the plan commission, I think somebody already mentioned that, on August 21st. And the community outreach team meeting on August 27th. Also, on August 27th, a group of us from the city met with Sarah Callums and Leslie Nairmore, who gave a presentation here today about what's going on to Mid-Columbia Community Action. And on September the 3rd, I attended a board of county commissioners meeting to discuss the Basal of Commons project. And with that, we'll move on. Item nine, our item nine is the consent agenda. Tonight, we have a record eight items on the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. As I said, we have eight items. First, we have approval of the July 28th council meeting minutes. Two, three, and four items are resolutions assessing three properties for the cost of nuisance abatement. Number five is a proposal to give the city manager the authority to execute a legally, legal services agreement with Stag Louisa for product liability multi-district litigation. Item six is giving the city manager the authority to execute necessary documentation for the Purdue Direct Settlement. Item seven is giving the city manager the authority to execute necessary documents for other various settlements. Eight, and number eight is authorizing the city manager as the city's authorized representative for the purposes of accepting a grant for the airport master plan project. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor Ring to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Item 10A. We originally had four resolutions on the agenda in regards to public officials' compensation. Three of those, items 10B, C, and D, applied to the six members of the city council and the mayor, and required a quorum of the city council and declarations of conflicts of interest in order for the city council to approve those three resolutions. Since we have had some city council members on Zoom and some potential attendance issues, those three resolutions will be postponed until our next city council meeting on September 22nd. Now, quorum and conflicts of interest are not an issue with item 10A, which deals with compensation for city staff as opposed to elected officials. All city employees are public officials for the purpose of the Oregon Government Ethics Law. And it prevents public officials from using their position for financial gain. Gain being something as significant as receiving a salary or a benefit, or something as minor as a bottle of water, a piece of candy from a candy jar, or having a pre-city council meal, city council meeting meal. Unless part of their official compensation, unless it is part of their official compensation package is determined by the city council. In May of 2025, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission issued a legal opinion that stated that public officials may receive certain fringe benefits only if they are made part of their official compensated, compensation package. Again, something as significant as a salary or a benefit, or something very minor as I outlined before. The attached resolution applies to city employees and expressly makes food beverages and other incidental items part of the official compensation package for all city employees, and also clarifies that the city's intent has always been, the compensation has always included, as part of every past or current city employee's official compensation package, food, beverage, and those other incidental de minimis items for the purpose of every wage, excuse me, for every wage agreement. So with that, I hope I explained that properly. Is there any questions that, if council members would like to ask?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick clarification, this is relevant to even, even events like employee appreciation lunches and things like that as well.
Yeah, good point. It also includes, for example, we just had a employee and volunteer appreciation luncheon at City Park, and it would include things like that. We've also, it also affects volunteers, volunteers who volunteer their time, for example, the budget committee, where, you know, we have meetings at 5:30 at night, and we often serve some incidental and de minimis food to the members of the committee to kind of reward them for volunteering their time. So yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Other clarifications or any other questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 25-038 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor Ring to approve the resolution 25-038. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Item 10E is a special ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Blue Mountain Networks. Mr. Klebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in the packet is the staff report, as well as the proposed special ordinance. The city currently has numerous different franchise agreements with providers of cable services, electric utility services, natural gas, solid waste disposal service, and telecommunications services. This is a typical way to permit these companies to use our public right of way. Blue Mountain Networks, or BMN, acquired Gorge Networks in 2020, which had a franchise agreement with the City of the Dals and continued to operate their system within the city limits under that original agreement. We became aware of this acquisition and the need to appropriately transition and update that agreement from Gorge Net to Blue Mountain in late 2024. This new franchise agreement with Blue Mountain continues to build upon a lot of the work that we've been doing over the last year, year and a half or so, to review and update the various franchise agreements that we have. Some of the key provisions of it include an original 15-year term with an option for either the city or Blue Mountain to open that agreement every five years to renegotiate, requires Blue Mountain to notice the city of any transfer of its corporation, to ensure that we continue to receive any associated franchise fees from this agreement, as well as process any, any updates or transitions. A clear process for addressing issues related to the franchise agreement or the city's regulation of its public right of way, if there are any conflicts and how we bring about resolution to those conflicts, and a new franchise fee structure guaranteeing that the city receives at least $500 per quarter as a minimal annual franchise fee agreement. Typically, or in a lot of instances, the franchise fee is a percentage of their total sales. They may not have any sales within the city limits, but still be occupying or making use of our right of way. And so we came up with this minimal annual franchise fee component to receive some compensation. Some of the budget implications, as I mentioned, there will be that $500 per quarter as a minimum, or 7% of its gross revenue, whichever is greater. And so staff's recommendation is to move to adopt special ordinance number 25-609 as presented by title only, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for the city manager? Well, not seeing any questions. Anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt special ordinance number 25-609 as presented by title only.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made by Counselor Ring and seconded by Counselor Randall. I would like to ask the city clerk to please read the title of the ordinance.
Special ordinance number 25-609, a special ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Blue Mountain Networks LLC.
All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we're at item 11A, which is an ordinance in regards to the chapter eight of the Dals Municipal Code. I think it's important to note here that we've switched this to a discussion item. There will be no action taken tonight. We will be hearing from members of the public who do wish to speak. And we thought it was important that we have a full council here for this ordinance. We have one who had work obligations he could not get out of, another who had a medical issue tonight, and we almost had a third that didn't make it, but we do have a quorum, so we will proceed. The staff report, is that you?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, yeah, Counselor Ring.
Thank you. In accordance with Oregon Revised Statute 244.120, I want to publicly announce the nature of a potential conflict of interest prior to taking any action in my capacity as a public official. While I recognize this creates a potential conflict of interest regarding matters that may affect the mobile food vendor industry, I believe I can participate meaningfully in this discussion by making this public disclosure as required by ORS 244.120 before taking any action on matters related to this conflict or potential conflict, being transparent about my business interests and how they may relate to the topics at hand, and clearly distinguishing between my personal business perspective and broader policy considerations.
Thank you, Mick Counselor. Mr. Chandler is going to give the staff report, is that right?
I think Mr. Chandler will be, Mr. Chandler will be standing by for support as we talk about some of the land use and development perspectives associated with this proposed general ordinance.
You answered that question really quick there, didn't you? Okay, Kyle, Mr. Kara, please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. City Council, proposed general ordinance number 25-1419 is a proposed update and consolidation of the city's current regulations for transient merchants and mobile food vendors. These two chapters of our code are a bit dated and nearly identical in many respects. And so this proposed ordinance, I guess the first thing to know about what it does is that it consolidates them into a single framework for the public transparency, for staff, for administrative efficiencies, and for future updates to make everything a bit smoother. These regulations haven't really been updated in a meaningful way since 1997. In 2019, though, there were some health and safety type of updates when the ordinances were originally split. And so this proposed ordinance, again, is an attempt to sort of bring those two back together because the ideas there are the same. They both attempt to regulate the temporary or transient use, or temporary or transient distribution of food or goods within the city. And so it seemed, it seemed fitting to have them in the same ordinance because, again, the impacts associated with that distribution are identical for the most part. Clearly, there are some issues with food that might have health benefits or health impacts, rather. And so there is a special carve out in the proposed ordinance to address any health impacts associated with the distribution of food. And so And so because of the fact that this ordinance combines two others, typically what you might see when I propose an ordinance for you all is a red line, sort of indicating some of the changes on a word-by-word or sometimes character-by-character level, just due to its very nature, that it wouldn't be particularly helpful for the public or for council, really, when they're reviewing some of these proposed changes. And so I worked with the city manager and the planning director to come up with, I think we got it down to eight key substantive updates, and I'll just walk everybody through them, and we can go from there. So again, first thing this ordinance would do is repeal the old code. The second thing it would do is combine these two chapters that have previously been separate, mobile food and transient merchants, into a single framework for staff and for public transparency. And now let's get into the eight or so things that this ordinance does that might be different or otherwise enhances what we currently have. Starting up with some naming schemes, just to keep everything straightforward for tonight. Mobile food vendors are people who distribute food on a temporary basis from a fixed location. If you're a mobile food vendor or a transient merchant, currently you have a license. We're just going to change the naming scheme. It's the same thing, more or less. Vendors will have licenses under this proposed update, and merchants will have permits. And so any reference tonight to a license, just keep in mind licenses only apply for distribution of food, and permits only apply for the distribution of goods. We also have some exceptions that we've carved out under our current ordinance. Their exceptions are very few and far between, frankly, and so we wanted to enhance. I'll wait for the mayor to silence his phone.
It is silence.
Under our current ordinance, we have very few and far between exceptions, as I mentioned. Under the proposed ordinance here tonight, we will have exceptions, starting with vendors and merchants that are operating in a food pod. We have two food pods currently in the city of the DOWS. One's the Sixth Street Station and one's, you know, is the Landing. Any operations that are approved by the owners of those food pods, whether they're somebody out there selling T-shirts from an approved merchant stand or any of the food distribution that occurs at a food pod, those activities are not regulated by this ordinance, which is to say, in very plain English, if you have a food truck and a food pod, you don't need a mobile food vendor license. None of this will apply to you. There are also exceptions for anybody who's attending and distributing food or goods, whether they're carnival games or hot dogs during Cherry Festival and other types of special events. If you're at the high school and you want to call in a taco truck to serve your patrons as they're coming in, that they're basically only really serving the people that are attending those kinds of events, you don't need to get a mobile food vendor license to do that kind of limited activity. You also don't need a license from the city to do any occasional distribution if you're 16 years old or younger at a lemonade stand, selling Girl Scout cookies, any of that kind of activity. In theory, they could be regulated under this ordinance, and so we wanted to be really clear that the city has no interest in doing any of that. We don't think kids should have to come in and get a license for lemonade stands every once in a while. We also don't require any license or any sort of licensing at all for ice cream trucks, and we have a really specific carve-out for them, and just some very, you know, honestly very minor regulations there, but they do not need a license or a permit to operate. And we also don't require a license under this proposed ordinance for anybody who's distributing literature or any other type of information who, for a non-commercial basis, the purpose of which is to convey information or ideas. So that would be, you know, somebody handing out flyers, talking about an event or some idea, or political campaigning, or anything like that. You won't need a license or a permit to do any of that activity. Otherwise, you would. And so let's get into what exactly it would look like if you would need a license or a permit, and I'll use them interchangeably. Honestly, if you hear me say permit or license tonight, just think that it applies to both, unless I'm very specific or we're talking about very food-specific types of regulations. And those are, again, very minor, and otherwise those two ideas are identical. So currently, we have a whole regime of licenses and permit types, and it's getting a little confusing, I think, for the public, and not terribly burdensome for staff, but it could be better. And so to, again, considering the fact that we're going to be combining these regulations into one, we're going to keep it simple. There's only two kinds of licenses or permits going forward under this proposed ordinance. You get a Type 1 license if you're doing seasonal activity, which is 30 days or less. That seasonal license, let's say, hey, you want to do it for another month, you can do that. You can renew your license five times at the same location. So one month is the typical length, can be renewed five times in successive five-month periods for a total of six months of use on a Type 1 license. If you want to do a year, you could do that too, or I guess anything over six months and under a year, that would be a Type 2 license, and there are no renewals for Type 2 licenses. We think Type 1 licenses and permits, that'll cover most seasonal vendors, people that are selling Christmas trees or something like that, would absolutely be a great contender for seeking out a Type 1 license and a permit. The whole idea behind these regulations are that temporary uses come with a whole set of different different regulatory issues than brick and mortar and more traditional types. And so we think that having these two types of licenses and permits will make this really transparent for the public and for staff as we're processing applications, which, as a result of that efficiency, will mean, hopefully, fingers crossed, much more rapid turnaround times for everybody, which I think staff would appreciate, and I know the public would too. Our current ordinances don't define what it means to be temporary or transient in an objective way. The current definitions are a little cloudy. They don't they don't give you a definite time for for working here, and this definition of temporary that's being proposed here is for 12 months. And so if you're operating at a site for more than 12 months, you're no longer in the world of temporary use. Under this proposed ordinance, you would you would now be in the world of the Land Use and Development Ordinance, which is the state-mandated law that the city must use to regulate permanent use of land in the city's limits and in our UGB. And so that 12-month number is a little arbitrary, but it certainly seems to be the accepted best practice recommended to the city by our city's Special Land Use Council at Bariels or in Hammond, who also represent over 150 other municipal entities throughout the state of Oregon, and are certainly experts in the field that they that they're working in. Again, this proposed ordinance would put a cap on mobile food and transient merchant activity subject to this ordinance at 12 months. So we can talk more about what this might look like for new vendors or for existing vendors here in just a few minutes. So if anybody's following along on my staff report, I'm on the second page of it. We went through the distinction between licenses and permits, vendors and merchants, all of the exceptions that we're talking about. We've defined temporary as being not exceeding 12 months, and we're on number four, and I have already talked about it a bit about number five, the types, but jumping to number four, under our current ordinances for both mobile food and transient merchants, those two ordinances regulated activity in a limited way only when vendors or merchants engaged in commercial, i.e. for-pay, activity. But because, as I mentioned earlier, the impacts of such activities are not contingent at all on whether somebody's paying for food or otherwise receiving it, the proposed ordinance extends regulation to those activities even if no fee is charged. And I mentioned earlier, and partly why, the Community Development Director is here to help out tonight in case council had any questions about land use. I currently mentioned, or I previously mentioned that currently, our ordinances don't really say when temporary or transient is up, but again, as recommended to the city by our special land use attorney, 12 months is the industry-accepted best practice for when something that's temporary on land really becomes the permanent use of land. And so when something becomes the permanent use of land, we have an entirely different part of the city's code that works on that, and that's called our Land Use and Development Ordinance, also informally and affectionately coined the LUDO. And so this proposed ordinance no longer offers what we currently offer, which is a Type 3 license. And if you look on the fee schedule for a Type 3 license, you'll see that it's $440, which is the exact amount that a site plan review application, which is processed through our LUDO, costs. And so we will, under this proposed ordinance, continue to use site plan review for certain types of activities that are that I'll talk about here in just a minute, which I'll just go over them now, actually. If you have a food pod like Sixth Street Station or the Landing, you had to already go through a site plan review process, and that will still be true under this proposed ordinance. If you connect to city utilities, you'll have to go through the site plan review process, and that will still be true under this ordinance. If you need more seating or structures than we currently allow under Type 1 or Type 2 licenses, you will need to go through a land use process, and all of this is the current law. And by the way, for seating for mobile food vendors only, actually, I don't believe we allow seating for merchants. Currently, and we haven't changed this in the proposed ordinance, currently you're allowed four tables with six seats per table without anything else, but if you need more than four tables and six seats per table, you need to go through a land use process. That's what it currently reads, and that is not proposed to change here. The only change I'm making and proposing here would be to include in the site plan review requirement, again, the only change, is if somebody, if a vendor is intending on offering drive-through services, we found just anecdotally and just from our own observations throughout the city and other cities, that whenever a vendor tends to offer drive-through services, the impacts associated with that use are, they're more pronounced. I mean, you might have queuing that ends up taking up a ton of space on somebody's real property and bleeding out into the right-of-way. These are the kinds of things that we're hoping to funnel into a land use process. So again, the only change for site plan review, and recommended change, rather, is if you're offering drive-through, you also have to go through site plan review. But that leaves a gap, and that leads us to number 6B on the third page of my staff report, where we talk about this to-be-determined land use and development process. We don't currently have in our Land Use and Development Ordinance a process that's really a great fit for addressing what happens when a vendor stays on a parcel of land for longer than 12 months. We feel, I think internally as staff, and when we were talking with the city manager and the planning director on some of these issues, that it seems like the site plan review process might be a little bit burdensome for a vendor, that we think we can probably figure out a good way to go there in the future, but we're not there yet. With that said, updating the city's Title 10 in our land use code is a process that's completely different than the process that we were supposed to go through tonight, but now we're doing a discussion. That process for amending our land use code requires the state to review all of our land use code for compliance and conformity with state law. It has to go through our planning commission, which is, they meet specifically to address issues concerning our land use and development ordinance, and they they sort of make a recommendation based off of staff's staff's input to the city council to ultimately make a change. So I would say the fastest this city has ever really gone through a LUDO amendment, I think if we were just dropping everything and getting right to it, realistically, I would say three months. That would be the fastest I've ever seen anything get passed through LUDO. And so because that process requires, as I mentioned, planning commission involvement and hearings for the public, testimony for the public to be inputted, and we want to be really thoughtful and methodical about it because it has to get state approval, and we have to ensure compliance with state law, that process is not going to be fast-tracked whenever, unless we can help it, we never want to fast-track that. So I think in the future, if the council adopts this proposed ordinance, we'd very much like to be very thoughtful and have a good interactive back and forth with the public and try to see what makes the most sense from the land use perspective for for vendors and merchants that want to occupy the same piece of property for more than 12 months. But for tonight, and for the purposes of this discussion, that is not at all what we're intending. Currently, as I mentioned, we do allow a Type 2 license to be renewed. That will be, I'm proposing and recommending that we get rid of that because, again, 12 months of use would trigger the Land Use and Development Ordinance provisions. So this leaves a gap for vendors who want to keep occupying the same piece of land for longer than 12 months. And so what we're recommending is they can continue to operate until the city figures out what we want to do from the land use side under a Type 2 license. And so over time, big picture, Type 2 licenses won't be eligible for renewal. As soon as we update the city's Land Use and Development Ordinance, which I mentioned here in my staff report, the city will, of course, send renotice, and it'll be a very public process where we would honestly, frankly, very much look forward to having a conversation about some of those dynamics. But for right now, this is just saying, hey, this ordinance doesn't really regulate use of land for longer than 12 months, so go see the LUDO, and if the LUDO doesn't say anything, you guys are good to go with your Type 2 license, no problem. Number seven on page four says fees. We're not doing any fee changes here tonight, even if the council adopted the ordinance, which the council will not be adopting anything tonight, it's merely a discussion item. But fees are set by the city council via resolution. We have a fee schedule, it has all city fees on it. We update it periodically, definitely at least annually, sometimes twice a year, but no proposed fee or no fees are proposed for change. However, we are making some changes to some of the fee structure. Currently, for both vendors and merchants, they're required to remit a down payment investigation fee of $20 with their application, and if it's approved, that $20 is applied to the cost of the license or the permit when it's issued. Currently on our fee schedule, Type 1 licenses are $30, and again, that investigation fee is $20. So realistically, you pay $20 when you submit your application, and then when you get approved, you just pay 10 more dollars. Staff's proposing getting rid of the investigation fee entirely. That $20 has historically been given to the city so that it can run background checks on applicants, and that background check requirement appears to be a historical relic. It's pretty unique to the city of the DOWS, frankly, and in fact, staff couldn't identify any other Oregon city that required background checks to operate as a vendor or merchant. And so, as I mentioned, staff recommends simply removing that requirement and thus the investigation fee that our ordinances currently have, because any potential public safety concerns that are associated with those activities are already addressed through many other provisions of this proposed ordinance. And it seems also that that requirement to have a background check might appear to have a high potential for discouraging vendors and merchants from pursuing business opportunities here in the DOWS. Again, we couldn't find any city anywhere in Oregon that required this. We're also proposing a reduction of the fee that we that we currently have. So we already have a fee reduction available for vendors who are offering healthy food items. That's a defined term in our ordinance. Currently, it's a 15% fee reduction. I think realistically, it didn't seem that great of a reduction for offering healthy food, and so this proposed ordinance proposes enlarging this reduction for 50%. So if you offer at least two healthy food items on your menu as a mobile food vendor, I'm proposing getting that fee reduction for your license fee down to 50% of the cost you would ordinarily be expected to pay. And currently, nonprofit organizations, community organizations, service clubs, charitable organizations, and people who are selling Oregon-grown produce that they grow themselves are eligible for transient merchant license fee waivers, and so staff's proposing expanding that fee waiver eligibility to all of those same entities that are also distributing food. So anyone who's eligible, again, nonprofit corporations, community organizations, service clubs, charitable organizations, or people selling Oregon-grown produce that they grow themselves are eligible to have their license or permit for free. All they have to do is send in a request to have it. All they have to do is send in a request to have it done for free at the time they submit their application. I understand that the city manager's office would be very supportive of those types of requests as they come in for eligible entities. Okay, nearly there. Number eight. Currently, our ordinances make violation of each ordinance punishable by a fine not exceeding $250, but the sale of each article of food or goods without a license is currently considered a separate offense. And so as I wrote in my staff report, put another way, if you don't have a license right now, and you sold two hot dogs, two bags of chips, and two soft drinks, under our code currently, the way it's reading, that's looking like a $1,500 fine. That's six items, each one up to $250. $1,500 is a potential fine for you. That seems a little bit much. And so staff's recommending, let's ease up on that penalty ramp-up. We're not going to make each article of food or good subject to that. So staff's recommending, we'll just use the same exact penalty enforcement scheme that we've put out very recently in our noxious vegetation ordinance. We just did an update for that a few months ago. And honestly, I think more and more, as time goes on, we're going to be streamlining most of our ordinances to follow this more or less same penalty structure. For first violations, it's $165 presumptive fine. And the court, the municipal court, who hears the violations and adjudicates them, can go up to $500 per offense. But the baseline is 165, and so typically that means, as a presumptive fine, that if you pay the 165, that's the end of it. That's for the first violation in a 12-month period. The second violation in a 12-month period is $265, up to $1,000. And for a third or more violations, it's $440, up to $2,000. But again, this would not apply to two hot dogs, two bags of chips, and two soft drinks. This would just be each day's violation. Special notice of tonight's meeting was given out to all the food pods and vendors and merchants in the city that have active licenses to facilitate some community stakeholder engagement and meaningful participation here. If you're here and you operate a food pod and you didn't receive a letter from the city, that means you don't have a license. I encourage you to get one. And just to sort of put a bow on it, just to sort of make sure that I'm accurately expressing what the intent of this ordinance here is. It's to streamline the application process for applicants to ensure that if you want to go, you know, be a vendor or a merchant, you have a really straightforward path on how to do it. It'll modernize the application. It'll be very transparent to see exactly what the requirements are and when you need them. That's both for seasonal or year-round activities. Again, if you're an existing merchant or vendor and you have an active license, you got a letter from the city, you're more or less good to go, so long as your license expires or your permit expires, in which case you can continue to operate, as long as you have a valid one. You'll be eligible under this proposed ordinance for a type one or a type two. And again, type two eventually will sort of attrition out, but until then, the city will honor the type two license renewals. You can continue working. You don't have to worry about land use or anything like that, unless you have like connection to utilities or those other triggers like a drive-through. And again, if you are an existing vendor or merchant and you didn't get a letter from the city talking about tonight's meeting, you should definitely come in to the community development department or go online and submit an application as soon as you can. And those type two licenses that are issued will continue to be valid until the city updates our land use and development ordinance, which I realistically wouldn't expect for at least six to 12 months, maybe longer. I'm happy to stop talking now, and I'm happy to answer any questions as they come up.
Okay, here's the way I'd like to run things. We will have the council ask questions of the staff, and we will not have any deliberation, just questions. And then we will open up to those members of the public who have signed up to speak. And then after that, the council will then deliberate. We will not, again, be taking a vote, but we will deliberate and discuss the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. So with that, does the city council have any questions they'd like to ask the staff? Council Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question about the healthy food definition. You say that's defined in the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah. And so I think this was a Blue Zone initiative when it was passed through in the 2019. Oh, I know it's in here. One second.
Page nine.
Thank you. Page nine. Yeah. We have a license fee reduction. It's currently listed on page nine, subsection C of 806040. And that's right, we offer a 50%, or at least I'm proposing that we offer a 50% reduction in any fee associated with a vendor who's offering at least two healthy food options. We define that as meaning plant-based food that does not include fried food, trans fats, or high fructose corn syrup, or that has been demonstrably deemed by NCPhD as healthy food. So if you get a letter from NCPhD saying, PhD looked at my menu and we're going to offer this, and they say at least two of my items are healthy, the city will reduce your fee by 50%.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Council Runyon.
Mr. Carr, I did not hear, maybe I missed it, anything mentioned about public rights of way, sidewalks, roads, et cetera?
Yeah.
Could you go over that again if I missed it, please?
No, I don't think you missed it. I didn't really talk about it because this ordinance doesn't change anything to do with the public right-of-way, other than the ice cream trucks that I mentioned earlier. Currently, mobile food vendors and transient merchants are prohibited from operating in the public right-of-way. That's not being proposed to change here. The only thing that I suspect might have caused some people to show up here tonight is the expansion of the definition of what it means to distribute food or distribute goods. Like I mentioned at the very beginning of this, the current definition says the distribution of food or goods is distribution in a commercial way, or this is part of a business. There's a transaction where somebody's paying something for goods or food. Under the proposed ordinance, that definition's expanded to just talk about the activity, not whether it's being done in a commercial or a non-commercial way. And so I didn't mention it earlier because there is no change to the prohibition of operating in the right-of-way. You currently cannot operate in the right-of-way as a merchant or a vendor, except in those exceptions that I talked about, like Cherry Festival, or as part of an approved event, or as an ice cream truck. But other than that, there's no change to the right-of-way prohibition. Hopefully that's helpful.
Well, I definitely thought it needed to be mentioned directly because that is a concern.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
I want to ask a follow-up question on that. On page 138, section three, public right-of-way. Section 3A, "Only during event, no person shall engage in food distribution or the distribution of goods on, upon, or within the public right-of-way, including from a vehicle, except for limited operations as part of and within an approved special event." So I'm assuming that this section is, there is no change in this section, that this is in our current municipal code?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Did you have another question, Counselor? Runyon?
No, no, no. I just wanted to make sure we talked about it.
Any other questions? Counselor Ring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious. So removing the type three provisions is going to basically allow, or not allow, but it'll shift operations for any mobile food vendor connected to city services? Not just the pod, potentially?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So mobile food vendors that need to connect to city services at all.
You mean utilities?
Utilities, yes. Water, power, things like that. Would fall under our Title X under land use in the future. And in here, it does say that there's a provision, there's like a TBD carve-out for that.
No, actually, I would be clear not to interrupt you, but I think, just to save you, because I don't know if you're thinking about this the way that I was intending, but you don't, if you connect to city utilities, you will need to go through site plan review. The TBD land use process are for those vendors that operate without direct connection to city utilities outside of a food pod. I can think of a handful in my head right now. I bet a lot of people in the room can. But they've been on the same parcel of land for over a year, maybe even over five years. But they're not connected to city utilities. They don't offer more seating than we allow. And so they're sort of in this gray area, and that's the gap we're hoping to bridge with this TBD land use process. Again, if you're connecting to city utilities, you will need to go through site plan review, and that's not changing here in this proposed ordinance. That's currently the case.
Got it. Yeah, so really for the, call it type twos that are there for more than 12 months.
Yeah.
You're saying that there's, like currently, they would go through site plan review?
Yes.
Are you recommending that there's a future amendment to this ordinance or our land use code that covers, you know, effectively our type two mobile food vendors that are there for more than 12 months?
Absolutely. That's exactly what I'm saying. But it absolutely also needs to be done in our land use code because it would, in over 12 months, if this council adopts this ordinance, over 12 months would be permanent use of land, which is, by state law, requires to be addressed in our LUDO. And the city manager, if you want to weigh in on what that proposed TBD process might want to look like, maybe we can get some council feedback on that.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. I think some of the conversations that staff had is that a full site plan review process for a food cart pod or for someone connecting to utilities is very appropriate. But for someone who may be there a few years, has a much lower impact on the proposed site, doesn't have that additional seating or other structures or canopies and things of that nature, a less onerous or a less expensive process or involved process might accomplish the interests of the city while also being as business-friendly as possible to the various food cart vendors that we may have in town. You know, again, I think of, you know, a very substantial establishment who's been there for five years with a shade canopy and structures and things of that nature as compared to, you know, a small, let's just say, hot dog vendor on the corner who's there consistently, you know, for a couple of years now. But the impacts are different. And so trying to balance, you know, what the city needs to do and what some of our responsibilities are with, in alignment with the efforts behind this ordinance as well, to streamline, to get merchants that may not be in line, in line in the most reasonable fashion, efficient fashion, and be as business-friendly as we can be is was the balance we were trying to strike and the goal.
That's good to hear because I know, having been through my own site plan review with Director Chandler and whatnot in the past, it is a, can be a pretty arduous task to accomplish. And I would definitely encourage that to be brought into consideration because these are not, you know, you know, a full brick-and-mortar restaurant bringing in, you know, millions of dollars in revenue or whatever the case may be.
Sure.
I'd like to follow up on that. Mr. Klebs, you would, should someone have to go through that land use process as you described, the to-be-determined? You would describe the land use process as being, say, business-friendly?
I mean, that's the balance that we try to strike with all of our processes to the best of our ability. You know, again, we have certain responsibilities and processes to go through, as Mr. Carr mentioned a moment ago, with planning commission and city council. We've had conversations around the best way to balance the, you know, the appropriate use of land and the authorization with that, with being as business-friendly as possible. And so I think, you know, not promising an outcome or whatnot, but the current site plan review process that we use for the city and for brick-and-mortar establishments is robust. And that, you know, for some of these mobile food cart vendors that may not have the same degree of impact as something that's brick-and-mortar or something that's long-term with a lot of those different structures, having a site plan review light, perhaps, or something to that effect, might achieve that aim of being, you know, business-friendly and conducive to different food cart vendors with that land use.
Would also involve outreach and encourage public input?
Correct. And that's something that Mr. Carr spoke to a moment ago, making amendments to our land use development ordinance, our LUDO, and involvement with city council and the planning commission would be a great opportunity for that.
I could comment too, just to comment. I wouldn't say that the land use process for site plan review is not currently business-friendly. So I think that's kind of getting lost in this conversation here, too.
I didn't mean to apply otherwise.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify it for everybody.
Thank you for emphasizing.
For emphasizing that. Specific to mobile food vendors, I think, is generally the.
Well, with the permission of the city council, I'd like to make sure that Mr. Klebs' remarks are part of the public record and are incorporated in the minutes, Ms. City Clerk. Thank you. Okay. On page 125.
Can you tell me the page numbers of the staff report and the ordinance? For some reason, mine doesn't have that. Okay, thank you.
Section two talks about exceptions. "The current ordinance do not generally apply to vendors or merchants engaging in food distribution or the distribution of goods in connection with approved events, rodeos, blah, blah, blah." The word approved, does that imply that there's, the city has issued a permit for all those?
No. So approved in that context doesn't have the, I don't think the word city is anywhere in there, right? It's approved by the property owner. And so I used an example earlier of, you know, let's say I want to operate a food truck for a basketball game at the high school. Well, you're an approved, you're part of an approved athletic event. That's one of the exceptions. It'd be approved by the high school to operate on their property, to serve the fans at the game and the players and all that. And so whoever the landowner is, as the case may be, would be the one approving that.
An example of where that kind of nexus has a nexus is, for example, the Cherry Festival down at the First Street parking lots.
Yep.
That's city-owned property, and then we work with the DOWLS Area Chamber of Commerce to approve the use of that property.
Right. So if you want to sell, let's just use hot dogs again as an example, at the Cherry Festival, you can do that without a license. All you need to do is be part of the festival, and you do it within the festival, and all of that's determined by the chamber.
Okay. Now, currently, type two licenses have an expiration date?
Yeah, so they're valid for one year with a one-year renewal. So two years if you renewed it. And yeah, that's it.
What happens if we're going through the land use process, this to-be-determined process, and someone's license expires before the that process is complete?
They will continue, they will have the opportunity to continue operating if this ordinance gets adopted under a type two license until, I think the way I drafted it was, six months after the city adopts the land use ordinance update that addresses that. So it's not even like, you know, let's say it takes effect December 31st or January 1st, right, of some year. You wouldn't even need to have gone through that process and gotten that approval until July 1st, right? So there's plenty of time and plenty of messaging that will be done. But until then, you can just use a type two license.
Okay.
You know, so long as you meet the conditions of having a license to begin with, yeah.
Other, Counselor Ring?
One more clarifying question. So for, in the future, type two licenses for mobile food vendors would be, I'm thinking of the case where somebody uses the same location continuously, year after year, but they're only there for nine months out of the year or something like that.
Sure.
Would they be able to continue to renew their license under this ordinance going forward, assuming they don't tie into the city utilities?
Yeah. Yeah, if they're occupying it for less than 12 months, they can continue occupying it. But the license, like the type two license currently and under this proposed ordinance, like let's say it's issued on January 1st, 2030. It expires December 30, 2031, or whatever, you know what I mean, right? Like 12 months. And it doesn't really matter if you're only using it for five days or all 365 days. The license will expire a year from the day it's issued. And if the city doesn't have a land use process in place for those kinds of situations, the way that this ordinance is drafted is you can continue to renew it so long as you're otherwise meeting the criteria for having one to begin with. We're just going to ignore that criteria until we get there. And then even when we get there, you get another six months until until that land use process is the process that you need to go through to have continued operations on that same parcel.
So in the future, type two food vendor operating on the same, same property, same lot.
Yes.
Or, you know, six months, 12 months, whatever, gets an initial license.
Yep.
And we're saying that there will be some, the future renewals would be non-existent, assuming the land use amendments went in a year later, then they would need to do some sort of.
It's just a temporary stopgap. Yeah, that's the right way to think about it. It's just a stopgap because we can't update our LUDO fast enough to handle these updates. This is just saying, look, in the future, 10 years from now, you're not going to need to go through, we're not going to let you have a type two license for more than a year on the same property. You can go get a type two license somewhere else on a different property. And you can do that forever. You just keep moving around every year. But until then, we'll continue renewing your type two property. If you've been on the same spot for five years, seven years, and you're not tied into city utilities, you're not offering a drive through, you're not operating in a food pod. You can have a type two license until six months after the city adopts a LUDO update that we'll talk to everybody about. Which I wouldn't see happening, again, at least six to 12 months for the update and then another six months on top of that. That's baked into this for 18 months.
I would encourage our city manager and staff to take that into consideration when, you know, looking at like a site, an SPR light type of activity. Because certainly if they're not going to tie into city utilities and services, make it commensurate with the type of activity that's going on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, again, to Director Chandler's point, we have a site plan review process that, 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 that isn't onerous or, or, or out of the blue or over the top. But, but a process that is similar to that accomplishes the needs and interests of the city. That's as, that's as, as, as business friendly and supportive as, as, as possible. Given the uses that are being proposed or so, something similar to that or, or lighter, I guess.
And we would keep the type one provisions for people that are sort of month.
Yeah. I, I think the idea behind mobile food vendors and transient merchants being regulated generally in every city, you know, in the United States almost, is to give people that are interested in exploring what it might be like to operate a restaurant, like a brick and mortar kind of kitchen, to give them like, like a flavor for it. I wonder if I want to spend my days doing this. Well, instead of committing to a lease in some commercial kitchen or otherwise buying a property or developing a kitchen yourself, it's a, it's a smaller investment to get your feet wet in that world of, of food service to go get, you know, a vending unit and to go operate that. But again, I think the idea here is that you can continue to do that. And in fact, if you get a couple of friends, just one other cart to do that too, you can go through a land use process and start your own food pod. In which case you don't have to worry about this code. But honestly, the, the, you know, restaurants in the city, if they want to sell hot dogs in a brick and mortar, have to go through land use processes too. They go through a change of use process if, you know, and so this is just trying to get the uses and the impacts associated with those uses in alignment.
Awesome. One last thing, and this is just sort of nitpicky math. But for the type one, we specify that there's 180 day provision for type one permits. And they're only, I, I can't remember if it's currently or.
Currently, and the same in the future, as my proposed recommendation, it's currently a 30 day license. But initially, but yeah, but you can, it's a 30 day license, but you can renew it five times.
Six total.
So, so 180 total days.
It takes, yeah, because I was doing my math by five and it didn't work out.
Sure. Yep. Five renewals. And renewals, I think currently under the fee schedule are $25 for the renewal.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move to audience participation. Please confine your comments to three minutes. First on the list is Michael Leish. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Thank you for coming.
Hi there, Michael Leish, the Dallas, Oregon, 306 Court Street. I just wanted to thank the council for bringing this forward. I had some concerns in the past about the operation of meal distribution in the right of way, specifically down on First and Union. And I know that the, the folks are doing great work in regards to the missionary work about giving meals away and, and those types of things. But I think that, you know, the blocking of the sidewalk and causing some safety concerns is, is really troubling in regards to folks that are visiting our community that come in from the cruise ships or people just trying to get by because the sidewalks ultimately are getting blocked. And I think that the activity could be better suited for, on private property where they've got access to bathrooms, power and can provide, you know, a safe, a safe environment for the folks that are visiting and taking part in the free meal program that those folks deliver to the community. And I think that the work is great. We just got to find a better location that is more suitable to the right of way and also to property owners. Because obviously, my property was impacted there where on three different occasions, they were hooked up to the power. And obviously, that would be stealing power from my tenants that are there at the property. And they called me and texted me and said, you know, that, you know, these, they don't have access to their, to their doors, to their, to their space that they're currently renting. So anyhow, I appreciate the council bringing this forward. And I'm sure that there'll be some type of resolution that's helpful for all of us so that we can all operate well together in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Hattonhour?
Alex Hattonhour, 122 West 17th Street, Dallas, Oregon. Thank you, council members and the audience for being here. I think pretty well, some of my concerns were answered, but the community has needs, obviously. And we have to be good stewards of our community and our people. The First and Union, First Street and Union intersection is close to home for me. I operate a business nearby. So the public right of way, I think it's going to be addressed with the new license process. In addition to that, seems obvious, people are in the street or on the sidewalk. And is the overflow that can occur, which has, does, Underpass hasn't always been there, Union Street. You folks have been here longer, as long as I have. It's, it's pretty tricky to navigate left and right, certain times a day. So to add foot traffic outside of a special event where the road's closed for the park for a concert or, you know, the circus on First Street. We operate commercial vehicles and, and as well as other vendors in the area and receive commercial vehicles. So anyway, just, you know, you put people out in the public right of way that aren't supposed to, otherwise wouldn't be there. It was a problem. So the railroad, we haul gas and diesel. So railroad cars and gas trucks don't make a very combination. So it's concerning to me. Guess my, my point is in general, I don't, you know, there, there needs to be a better spot than what's currently being used. As Michael pointed out, he's a adjacent business owner. But a concern of anybody in the community, I think, would be not just the immediate activity, but would be the overflow. How are people getting there? Spending excess time there? Is it vehicle traffic to get folks to where they need to go with traffic? And then how do they part from that area? So anyway, those are my points. Appreciate you. Hear me out. Thank you.
Could you tell us where your business is located in the general vicinity? I know where Mr. Leish's is. Where's?
It's 201 West First Street is our primary address.
Okay. Thank you.
Head in road down First Street.
Right. Thank you. Next is Jean Parker.
Evening. My name is Jean Parker. My address, 420 West 7th. Some of you know, I was the former city attorney for almost 30 years. And during those years that Jonathan talked about when the ordinance wasn't changed, I guess you can blame me. It didn't happen. I have some, I guess, concerns about the ordinance. I think there's a question about whether Ms. Rogan's Bread and Blessings would be covered by the ordinance. And looking at the term vendor, I think they possibly could be because they do engage in the temporary food distribution. Question is it from a fixed location? I'm not exactly sure where they're operating from. I understand it's been on First and Union Street. She can maybe address that. But I think that they are using a vehicle to distribute the food in the street. And they were obligated under this ordinance and had to apply for the licenses. I understand they could get a 12 month license, but at that point they couldn't renew it. And I think that would really impact their oper, their operation. I think some of the people may speak tonight about all the people that are supporting this activity or acting out of their faith and out of their religion. And I think there's a potential here of a conflict between people wanting to express that and the city's right to want to, you know, regulate the use of the right of way. There's been particularly people eating, giving food to the homeless. There's been disputes and actually a lawsuit with the city of Brookings where they tried to regulate giving the food out to the homeless and the city lost that lawsuit. And I'm not implying that's what would happen here, but I think you need to think it through carefully about whether there are some options. Certainly Bread and Blessings, I think operated out of the, the meal site, St. Vincent Meal Site many years. And that apparently it's not happening now. I don't know whether that's another possible option. But I would encourage you to look at possibly a solution to find a way for them to be able to continue their missions. I think it's important we do continue that and have that opportunity.
Thank you very much. Chris Sukin.
My name is Chris Sukin, 5525 Cherry Heights Road. And I am here as a member of the Board of Community Meals. I am here to speak in support of Teresa. But first I want to make an announcement that first week in October, we're going to start repainting the Yumitella House mural to the west of the old post office. It's going to be an exact replica or re repaint of the existing design. So it's going to be beautiful and bright. You know, Teresa does a great job and I, I understand that to be determined LUDO plan, that could definitely work as long as whatever requirements are put in place there are simplified and tailored to this very low impact food distribution that she does. It's two or three plastic tables set up for an hour or two and then, and a couple of garbage cans and it all goes away after two hours. It's five days away. I would ask the council to consider putting her operation into the exceptions along with the lemonade stands. Free on commercial food distribution, food distribution program, a couple hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just respond to that last point? You know, the, the lemonade stand exception, we, you know, we wanted to address that. I think the lemonade stand exception has a couple qualifiers there. The first is that it, it's an exception for the occasional lemonade stand, right? And we don't really have a definition for that. We could certainly add one. Tonight's a discussion item. I don't think it's particularly helpful for anybody if we have a definition for what occasional means, but we could if we had to. And then the other thing I just wanted to flag too is the exception that that one is talking about. Authorizes lemonade and Girl Scout cookies and that kind of youth operated activity that is low impact, occasional and on private property or property that's owned by the government with the government's permission. I just want to just remind council that again, there is no vending currently allowed under the city's ordinances in the right of way. Except as part of a, a special event like the cherry festival when the streets are closed or for like ice cream trucks. And some of the associated impacts with right of way distribution of anything are traffic and public health, safety and welfare. We had, we heard from some business owners here tonight, but we've had a tremendous amount of public right of way impacts associated with use in the past. And so again, I just wanted to address that. So I, I think I, our ordinance currently has a huge carve out to give free licenses and permits to nonprofits and charitable organizations. All they have to do is submit a writing, submit a written request to the city manager at the time they submit their application. They don't have to pay anything. But I, it doesn't get rid of the need to have a license, which is to say that they can continue to do whatever they want to do. They just can't do it in the public right of way. It doesn't really matter who they are or what they're doing. If it involves food or, or goods, it can't be in the public right of way for public safety. And all it takes is one pedestrian to get hit by a car, right?
Okay. Shelley Hanson?
Shelley Hanson, Washington Street. I run Bridges to Change here in the Dallas. And I'm here to support Teresa. I want you to think about what it's like to share a warm meal with people that don't cringe when you come near them. More than just food, community. I don't know where I would reach all these people. I do outreach. I get them IDs so they can get fine work. I'll take them to treatment. Do other things for them too. We have a clothing, clothing thing in our office where they can get pre clothing. And if I go there to help, but need help, they're there and I know where they're at. I don't, Teresa leaves it cleaner when she leaves than when she got there. She has never, she never makes a mess. She's always after people to get out of the road and don't mind their Ps and Qs. She's just awesome. I mean, she goes above and beyond to make sure that people have a, a nice, warm, nutritious meal. And I would, she can't be there. We have to find somewhere where she can be. These people are not going to go away. And they need some connection. Human beings. I could consider maybe finding a better place for them if sidewalk isn't a good place. She's went from place to place, place where people don't want her there, don't want her here, don't want her there. These people aren't going away and they're human beings. And I think we need to find a spot for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa Farquharson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. As the chamber, I've been reviewing all of this actually because some of our businesses are food, food truck vendors. And so I've had some conversations and clarified many different things already. But I do want to make a couple of points that I think would be great. First off, thank you for making this a discussion item tonight instead of an action item. I feel like there was a very short notice to some of us to try to really go through everything and absorb what was there. So I do appreciate having the chance to discuss and ask questions. And then two, I do have a, a not maybe a question, but a comment or suggestion for the type two and going into the land use. You have suggested once we do have a land use policy and process that they have six months to be compliant to that if they're on a property for over 12 months. Can I suggest that maybe that is a 12 month? I know it's extending it for one more year, but sometimes those land uses can't be done as quickly as six months because it may include construction. And as we all know, all of our contractors are busy. So I'm making a suggestion that maybe that compliance period is moved to a 12 months. And then they need to be compliant with that land used if that's where that shift is going. So that's my one suggestion there. And then I do have a couple of suggestions just from a chamber's point of view in the how to's. I would love it. Use me as a partner, guys, to help get the word out. I'm here for you, but also. I would love it, use me as a partner, guys, to help get the word out, I'm here for you, but also I would really like to see a FAQ. A FAQ done with also like a guide. We have many people who come into our office and say, how do I start a food truck? I'm sending them to planning, but if I have an outline what they need to do, what's required, what. Property use, land use, all of that, if that's laid out, I will include that in my packets. For them so that we can prevent confusion and start these people out with a greater success story from day one. And that is really, I went through it thoroughly today and asked lots of questions this morning, so. I thank you for considering these two requests and also would love to be a part of those conversations for that land use process. That's coming. Thank you.
For those that don't know, Lisa is the Executive Director of the Dells Area Chamber of Commerce, thank you for coming and thank you for your comments. Oh, Judy Merrill. Stretching, don't, won't count on the three minutes, we're very good about that.
I will hurry up, my name's Judy Merrill, I live at 400 West 11th Street, the Dells, Oregon. I'd like to, one, thank everybody for their comments and the. I felt that the agenda stated that the ordinance is an action item. And then when I heard you Jonathan state that it's a discussion item. One of my questions that I'd like to further go on is will we be given an opportunity to further discuss rather than just three minutes? An example of public hearing. Second, when and why was Teresa asked to leave the Lewis and Clark? And third. At some point, I'd like to, I'm learning about the recreational immunity bill that was put in by the state and, and. Over the last couple of years and this was, this happened and implemented, once they reviewed it and rewrote it. The new, on June 2nd of 25, what I believe. And that might coincide, I don't, I'm not too sure as far as when the date was that Teresa was asked to leave Lewis and Clark. And then I've also heard that, and if that's true about the recreational immunity, did the Dells opt to. Additional protections of Bill 105.688, an amendment by the Senate Bill 1576. And third, or and fourthly, or thirdly, I forget.
Fifthly.
Okay.
He's like fifth.
Okay, well, not lamenting longer than a few minutes. And in addition, I just wanted to. Oh my goodness, I don't, oh, the Dells visioned statement. By working together, we will provide services that enhance the vitality of the Dells. And I believe I've seen that over the years and I trust. Working with the vulnerable communities and our community, which is, it could be any one of us. I hope that the, that the city council, the city can work together with the community so we can come up with a solution. For serving meals that like Teresa Bread and Blessings has done for 30 years. Thank you.
I'll answer your first question and that is that when it comes back up on September 22nd, we'll go through a similar process to what we've done tonight. I would ask though that in the interest of time that people not. Get up and testify and say things that are repetitious and that's my only comment on that. Ask for the, I would ask, ask our city attorney to explain the recreational immunity ordinance that was passed.
I think I just. I think we would encourage, just because there's so many people and these meetings are already quite long when they, when they get long. We always encourage written comments and submissions to the city council, you can always email the city council directly, you can copy the city clerk, we can have it distributed, whatever, and you could write. 20 pages, right, and it'll get delivered here in staff and the city council can review your comments thoughtfully and maybe have a meaningful chance to respond. And so that's always going to be the case on any issue. With that said, on recreational immunity. That issue of recreational immunity, which the idea behind it is, if you own land that you want to have opened up for the public to enjoy in a natural way. The idea behind recreational immunity is you shouldn't get penalized if somebody goes out there and injures themselves while they're recreating. And so the legislature at the, at the state level has determined that in certain circumstances, public bodies can avail themselves of that kind of protection. Because there's like a policy behind it, it's like, you know, cities and counties and the state, they own a ton of land that is often used for recreating. And so we want, and in the state of Oregon, to incentivize those landowners to open their properties up for the public to go do that. That concept is a legal concept that's been around for 90 years-ish and has sort of ebbs and flows. The legislature sometimes gets really restrictive on what they would consider to be eligible for that kind of immunity. And then there's a lawsuit of some kind and everybody looks at it at the legislative level and they say, hmm, maybe we were a little bit too restrictive and then they'll loosen it up. And sometimes they go too far the other way. It'll be a really loose standard where people are getting hurt and they really do need, you know, some ability to get compensated for that injury because. You know, the public body may have had a duty and so instead of being too loose, they'll get. Restrictive again and it sort of goes up and down. To avoid the up and down waviness of that cycle, the city adopted its own ordinance. To declare properties that we post with a sign and there's, there's some requirements, it's in our code. This was just a few months ago. Properties that we post with a sign that indicates, hey, this is a recreational property of the city of the Dells. And we're only authorizing the use of that property for recreational purposes and the term recreational purposes is defined by state law. And any use that is not for recreational purposes. Is not allowed unless you have a permit. And you can apply and people have applied for that permit to use any of the city's recreational properties for non-recreational purposes or. For exclusive purposes, so we have a festival park, it's a pretty special place, it has walls on three sides and it has one entrance. And so you can actually have an exclusive event at Lewis and Clark Festival Park, it's a pretty special kind of park that would have that. Where you can have the whole park for a group of people or for yourself. And so we've always offered that type of permit through this community. The only difference now is, is that if you want to use the park for purposes that are not recreational, you have to get a permit or if you want to use it exclusively, you have to get a permit. We have permits available.
I have a question. So I'd like to get together with my friends and we bring a potluck, we bring our own food that we cooked at home and we bring it to the park.
Yeah, go for it, get a permit. Get a permit.
You're saying that anyone that wants to use the park and have a picnic there? Or to bring our friends together, that we have to get a permit in order to do that?
I think we talked about this at the night of that meeting, right?
Mr. Mayor, I think the ordinance that we're discussing is about the mobile food cart vendor, I'd be happy to answer questions about the Lewis and Clark Park if you'd like.
What was your fourth question?
When and why was Teresa asked to leave Lewis and Clark? And. Teresa with Bread and Blessings, and I'm not directing it directly to you Jonathan. The city council?
Certainly, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer that question, I think the discussion though, this evening is about the mobile food cart vendor, not the Lewis and Clark ordinance. Or the recreational immunity ordinance relating to the Lewis and Clark Park, but your, your direction would be appreciated.
Well, when will there be a time for us to learn what has happened with Teresa Bread and Blessings at the Lewis and Clark Park? And. The consequences and what. How can we as a community learn more and discuss more and not just in three minutes?
I'd be happy to set up an appointment with you and, and go over that recreational immunity.
So we can all learn together instead of one by one.
Well, any written comments that you provide, anybody provides to the city council on an issue that comes before us. Will end up in the agenda packet publicly available, every, every meeting has an agenda packet, as you know. And those comments will be copy pasted directly in there. So if you send in an email or a letter like that, if you want to have an expression of your, your, your personal beliefs or if you want to have. Any sort of expression of anyone's beliefs, you can do that by submitting it to the city council, the city clerk will ensure that it gets in the agenda packet. Very frequently, our agenda packets are chock full of those letters and those live forever in the city's permanent files.
And, and with the mayor's permission, I mean, I can, I can more directly answer her questions now if you'd like.
Do you have my permission? Yeah.
Would help a lot of people here in the meeting.
Stand, it's just not the topic of discussion this evening, but that's fine, that's just trying to keep us focused on the topic of discussion on the agenda item. But the recreational ordinance of the Lewis and Clark Park means that activities in the Lewis and Clark Park such as a. A get-together or a birthday party or to go down and walk your dog, those recreational uses are the focus of the use of that park and are, are allowed. If you wanted.
Or aren't.
Are, are allowed, sorry about that. And if you want exclusive use of the park for your own functions or for a concert, you want to charge money for an event, you have to go get a permit. If you have a non-recreational use such as the distribution of food, you can also get a permit as well. But we try on the balance, we try to balance the public use of that park with those other exclusive uses or non-recreational uses. And so we do have a certain number of permits you can get a month and a process to go through. Some of those uses have additional risks that aren't covered or are, don't have the same degree of protection with recreational immunity. So for example, if someone. Well, I don't know if I have a. Someone wanted to have their own exclusive birthday party and wanted to have 10 different bounce houses down there. There are different risks of injury and so we have different insurance requirements for those different uses, which is one of the reasons the permit process exists. And so as distribution of food is not a recreational activity, you'd have to get a permit to distribute food at the Lewis and Clark Park. That's something that Bread and Blessings can still take advantage of, but again, we balance that with the public use of the park and other users of the park, and so there's only so many permits you can get a month.
So was. I don't know for sure how long Bread and Blessings has been at the park. So she's been allowed, I mean, she's been there for quite a while. And. But now she's been asked to leave.
She's been asked to leave as, as it's not a recreational use of the park, but she can use the park with a permit. One of the dynamics here was the on-again, off-again recreational immunity dynamics that the city attorney mentioned a moment ago. And so to address that issue, we looked at this ordinance.
I will also add that for reasons that are complicated and don't directly relate to the issue here, I know that. Throughout Oregon, recreational immunity type ordinances have been passed by many cities throughout Oregon over the past year.
I know.
Yeah, okay.
I'm aware of that, but maybe other people here in the audiences.
And then, and then to your comment, if I may, you know, I briefly looked up the ORS 105 dot 668. You mentioned a moment ago, and I can't speak to this directly because I haven't looked at it. But I think it's a good opportunity to talk about the difference between public property such as the Lewis and Clark Park. And right-of-way such as sidewalks or private property such as, you know, someone may privately own. And the different permit systems we have in place for the use of those properties versus the right-of-way itself, and so this ORS that you're referencing in regards to the Lewis and Clark Park. Doesn't really apply in the way that you might, you, you may be intending. Because it focuses on the right-of-way and cities that have half a million population or more.
Then there's also Senate Bill 1576 and then Senate Bill 179.
I can't.
Well, it's just some. Information.
Why don't you leave copies of those with the city clerk and we can all have a copy.
I have a lot of scribbling on it.
What were the two Senate bills? What were the two Senate bills?
Senate Bill 1576 and then in 25 is Senate Bill 179.
So 1576 from 25.
I'm just really still curious and maybe I'm not going to find out as far as why Teresa was asked to leave Lewis and Clark.
Well, I think the city council adopted this ordinance on the recreational property that we've been talking about for the last few minutes in June.
Uh huh, so on June, the new ordinance, so this happened on June 2nd and the new ordinance came on July 1st this year?
Sounds right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ann Ring. Ann Ring. Not here. Bob Kenyon.
Well, that got a little lengthy there, but.
Well, it did, but as the person who moderates this meeting, I felt it was important to get all the facts out so that. Nobody can leave here thinking that their question's in getting answered, so why don't you give us your name and address?
Yeah, Bob Kenyon, 800 Liberty Street, the Dells. I've been working, I've been off and on with Community Meals and with Bread and Blessings for many years in the old location. And then we were over at Lewis and Clark Park. And. We had to, let's not get into that because we just talked about it. In answer to the, to the oil company, Hupner Oil Company and the landlord, Teresa did not want to be there. So she ended up on the corner of First and, and Union. And then the decision was made to move down halfway down the block. Which got away from the, from the intersection, so that, that's just answer to them, that wasn't her idea to go there. And you know, really what I, what I came, what I'm thinking is. It, it, it speaks well for a community that can make something like this happen. Chris Sukin with, with Community Meals was a wonderful thing, brought people in, it's a gift to us. When we were allowed to contribute our time and our energy and our money. To Community Meals and to Bread and Blessing. It's, it's a gift to the people that receive the food. It's maybe a bigger gift to those of us that. Put the, put it out, thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Murray.
I'm shortening my letter because you've already addressed some of this, so that's nice, thank you for.
Very appreciative.
Thank you for deciding to discuss. I'm Karen Murray at 2645 East 11th in the Dells. And I'm a volunteer at Bread and Blessings. I want to just. Offer my support to Bread and Blessings and Teresa and Linda and Griz, they're just amazing people that work. They get up at, at least two of them get up at 3:00 in the morning. And they work the better part of the morning and into the afternoon to serve hungry people. And Teresa's been doing it for 30 years, over 30 years. She's been moved around as we talked about, she continues to serve the hungry with passion. She needs to be supported by our community, I feel. In thinking about the impact of the ordinance on Bread and Blessings, I've come to the conclusion. That we need to find a way to get our organization. Not to be transient and not to be mobile. Her program should be allowed in my estimation back into the St. Vincent de Paul Building with the blessings of the city and lots of. We'd go through a lot of effort to make that right, if you guys would agree to that. Teresa was instrumental in raising the funds for the St. Vincent de Paul Building. And she also initially, for the initial purchase and the redesign of the building for the purpose of feeding the hungry. Let's use the building for what it was designed to do. Obviously, the program would work with the staff and the board of St. Vincent de Paul, the city police, Mid Columbia. Community Action Council, Center for Living, Outreach People. Whoever could assist in making sure that the people stay safe and we follow all the rules. And this would include feeding the hungry on weekday mornings from 9:00 AM. Till about 10:30 and usually the, the food. And usually the, the food servings ends about 10:00 and then eventually the clients would leave, um, if the building wasn't open. So Monday and Friday, the building is not normally open. The other three days of the week, they are open. Bread and Blessings is a separate organization from St. Vincent de Paul. I just want to make sure that's clear. They use the St. Vincent de Paul kitchen, storerooms, restrooms, dining area and parking lot. If breakfast was allowed to resume at the facility, they would serve the clients in the St. Vincent de Paul dining area and the restroom area would probably be used as well. And then the clients would leave the premises. I know there were very, very complicated feelings and actions that happened when the building was shut down. Um, in working together with all our partners, I feel we can overcome the challenges, you know, it may not be perfect, but we're willing to do probationary if it has to happen that way. And, um, again, Bread and Blessings was, was the main fundraiser to secure that building. It, it wasn't just the St. Vincent de Paul people. Uh, and they should be allowed to be considered, not to be considered mobile and not be considered transient. And, and then the ordinance would, as I see it, wouldn't apply to them. Is that correct? They were back in the building?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that right? Okay. So, you know, I just wash the dishes there. I help wash the dishes, try to stay ahead of all the cooking they do. And it, it's just unbelievable what they do. And, uh, I, I think we need to find a way that they can get back to their, their building. And, um, there is also a Senate bill or a House bill, the state of Oregon passed HB 3644 statewide shelter program.
Karen, you're running up against.
Okay, but there is a new thing out there. So I think we can maybe get some of that money for, uh, someplace to take people that need the help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Can I just make a, I just want to make a point to say that the city has never and really ever told St. Vincent de Paul who or what they can do with their building. We dismissed our lawsuit. If St. Vincent de Paul would like to have you there, that is up to St. Vincent de Paul. The city has no influence over whether St. Vincent de Paul opens the doors to you or to anyone. Okay? So if you've heard otherwise, I don't believe that you've been informed properly. The city has no interest at all with St. Vincent de Paul's facility. We had an amicable resolution to our, our suit. I think the dramatic and sustained conditions of Petland Street are a testament to some of the lack of activity. Um, and I don't think, uh, you'd have to ask St. Vincent de Paul, but I believe that they've publicly indicated that they've tried to shift away from some of those traditional services into a different sphere to fulfill some different parts of their mission. Um, but the city has no role there. So I don't want anybody to think that the city is preventing that. Absolutely not.
Okay, Connie Crumrick?
Connie Crumrick, 123 West 13th. Well, much has been said and so I've kind of tossed aside my original notes, so, and forgive me if I do repeat, I'll, I'll try to be very brief. Um, so I'm, um, here on behalf of Bread and Blessings. I'm a volunteer there. And I have, um, been reading about similar ordinances in cities around the state and around the country and, um, controversies and difficulties involved when people want to feed the hungry on streets and in parks. And I came across a really, uh, powerful expression of, uh, criminalizing kindness. And, um, you know, Bread and Blessings is about kindness. It's about love. And I've, I've really been impressed with that by, by seeing it firsthand as a volunteer. And, um, my, my hope is, and you know, this was what you just said, Jonathan, was a lot to think about in terms of the use of the St. Vincent de Paul building. But one way or another, my hope is that the city will be supportive and work with, with relevant individuals and groups to help find a permanent place for St. Vincent de Paul that also supports other citizens, landowners, businesses in the community. Because I don't want the headline to be, as it is in some cities, criminalizing kindness. I want the headline to be, "The City of the Dells Keeps the Kindness Flowing." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does, um, the city council have any other comments or questions? Okay, I'd just like to kind of wrap things up here. Um, I think it's fair to say that this proposed ordinance is a result of the staff being directed by the city council to try to address some of the issues that have come up, uh, about where and how food and goods are distributed so that sidewalks can stay safe and, and passable and sanitary for everyone. Uh, the ordinance does not ban feeding the hungry or charitable giving. It doesn't authorize citations or enforcement against people who receive goods and, 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 uh, food. Again, it's meant to address the sidewalk clogging, the ADA blockages and the trash, food waste and lack of restrooms, uh, that are prevalent in some areas on sidewalks and is not directed at any specific location. And with that, is there any other business to come before the city council?
I, I just, do I have any direction?
It is not proving upon this.
Okay, can you, can, yeah, come up and, um, if it's so.
Um, my name is Teresa Uregi-Zeman and, um, I do Bread and Blessings with Linda and Griz. And when we were on this street, on First Street and Union, we were told by the police that we needed to make sure that there was room for people to walk and we do that. And I don't know if there is, or you have a different idea about city sidewalks, but they told us to go and move back and we leave a room for people to walk. Um, you don't really see a lot of people walking down there, very, very few, unless they're coming for breakfast, nine to 10. Um, but, um, I think that we all need to go and just remember, we could be in the same situation sometime. You don't know. And they are really persons that are unloved and unwanted. God has called us to feed these people, to give them clothing or whatever they're in need of. I just thank you for considering that.
Thank you. And we, I don't think there's anyone here on the council that doesn't appreciate the work you, that you do. Again, is there any other business to come before the city council?
So, Mr. Mayor, staff, staff's direction here is to bring this ordinance back, targeting the September 22nd meeting.
Right.
Um, which is two weeks from today. Um, we'll turn around that packet just as quick as we can, uh, no later than Friday this week. Um, you know, much of what we've talked this evening talks about a streamlined process for mobile food cart vendors and transient merchants, uh, to be able to get a permit and to set up their operations and to, and to deliver the services that they are choosing or would like to deliver from private property and remaining consistent on the prohibition of such activities within the right of way across the board, except for a couple of those, well, not even a couple of those exceptions, those are still on the, the, on private property. And so that, I haven't heard anything different there to change. That would still be what we bring back at the September 22nd meeting. And honestly, the only, in, in addition there, you know, we have, we have, uh, fee reductions and fee waivers for nonprofits. Um, I wanted to mention last week, I met with one community health and MACAC and Bread and Blessings and Community Meals to discuss this ordinance and some of its impacts, as well as brainstorming and talking about potential alternative locations for Bread and Blessings and other services. Um, that's something that we can continue to do. City staff has met internally, um, on some of these dynamics in, in, in general, when it comes to, um, housing and houselessness as part of our city council goals. We can continue to do that work. Um, and the only question I have that would potentially be any kind of revision I would see, unless city council directs us otherwise for September 22nd, is potentially having a 12-month, uh, timeline for mobile food cart vendors to get a land use approval process to be determined versus six. And that was requested by the director of, from the Chamber of Commerce. And so I guess that's the only item on my list to get direction, unless there's something else from council, is on six months or 12 months.
I'm okay with 12 months. How does everybody else feel?
Are, are we talking about the, the transient versus the?
No, once a land, once the land use process is identified, mobile food cart vendors have 12 months to go through that process and get into compliance as opposed to six.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd definitely support that.
Counsel Runyon?
There we go. Sorry, a lot of buttons. One of the things that hasn't been brought up and kind of the elephant in the room, I think, that, and again, you know, I served as chair of MACAC and Mid Columbia Housing and I'm familiar with a lot of issues. The letters we've all been getting, because I, I believe in the food distribution, I have no problem with that. The public right of way is of interest. And a number of letters and phone calls have been about the same things that we had on Petland Street. It's not the food service. It was that residents became, uh, citizens became residents of the street next to the building and that became the issue. And what I'm being told, and I've observed it a little bit myself on a few tours, um, there are people now living underneath the overpass because wherever the food is, that's where they're going to be close to. So we have an issue somehow to balance for the good of both sides of the community. I'm not sure how we get there, but you know, a public right of way is a public right of way and, 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 you know, we have a lot of housing groups, one of which spoke here tonight. Maybe they would have some ideas about those that are, uh, currently staying, let's say, under the overpass or near it in that location. But that's one of the big issues of all of this and why this has come about. Yes, our ordinance has not been updated since 1997, but that's not really the issue here, is it? It's about the public right of way and it's not about the food distribution. It's about where it's done and the attraction to be in proximity to that food location if you are in need of those services. So I hope we take some of that into these, uh, conversations that will go out from here, uh, to, to work together on that. And I've, I've spent time with, uh, Chief Worthy and, and others and, and fire department personnel and so forth. And I know all of us on the council are trying to look at all the ways we can make all of this work, which has been expressed by a number of our good citizens here tonight. And we're going to do our best to make it all work. And that's all I, oh, I have to do one other thing for Amy, our city clerk. I did attend the joint planning and city commission meeting and also the briefing with the mayor and city manager and our attorney, which I forgot to put in my opening earlier tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? And with that, we will adjourn.